Before I read a statement, I'll just ask if we can stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in the moment to executive session.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before I read my statement, Madam Clerk, may we take a roll call vote before we go into executive session?
Yes, Council President. Council President Brito?
Here.
Council Vice President Rodericks?
Here.
Councilwoman Souza?
Here.
Councilman Cahoon?
Here.
And Councilman Murato?
Here.
I thank you. I just have a brief statement I'd like to read before we go into executive session. Good evening. As you know, the regular meeting for the East Providence City Council was scheduled for before the state official declared it a state of emergency regarding the coronavirus. It is not the council's intent to jeopardize the health and safety of our residents or ignore the prohibition about those gathering for people over 25 or more, recommended by the CDC and the state officials. However, it is necessary for us to conduct a brief meeting to allow the mayor to extend the local declaration of municipal emergency beyond seven days as we try to avert the further spread of this virus. Therefore, I will be asking the city council to amend the agenda to allow this to happen tonight as it's required by state law. Because I and other city council members recognize and respect the public input in light of the restrictions placed on the public gatherings, I will ask the council at the table to postpone any of the items in the agenda which public comment is required either under state or local law. I realize and recognize that some people may want to attend tonight's meeting for comment on these items. It would be unfair to pass anything where public comment is curtailed. Other items, like the issuance of entertainment license and inconsistent with the executive order, will also be asked to be tabled. The governor has issued further directive regarding the Open Meeting Act, which are being reviewed by our legal department and will be guided in future meetings in the city council. Until then, I urge you East Providence citizens to take the warnings and directive of our federal, state, and local leaders seriously so that we can stop the spread of this virus and protect our citizens. We remain committed to conducting all government business in a transparent manner and will adjust our procedures accordingly in light of the continuing threat to public health. Thank you. So with that being said, I'd just like to go into executive session real quick and real briefly. And anybody who would like to make a motion to go into executive session?
Make a motion to go into executive session.
Anyone who would like to second that motion? That counts as one. We have a motion and seconded by Councilman Cahoon. Roll call vote, please.
Question with the 42-46-5-8-2.
Roll call vote, please.
Yes. Councilman Cahoon?
Aye.
Councilman Murato?
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodericks?
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza?
Aye.
And Council President Brito?
Aye. Thank you. just so it could be captured by our audience at home and those that are not here. Good evening, once again. As you know, the regular meeting for the city of East Providence, city council meeting was scheduled before the state official declares a state of emergency regarding the coronavirus. It is not the council's intent to jeopardize the health and safety of our residents or ignore the prohibition about the gathering of 25 people or less, or more, excuse me, recommended by the CDC. However, it is necessary for us to conduct a brief meeting to allow the mayor to extend his local declaration of municipal emergency beyond seven days as well as to try to avert the further spread of the virus. Therefore, I will be asking the city council to amend the agenda to allow this to happen this evening, required by state law. Because I and all the city council members recognize and respect the public input in light of the restrictions placed on the public gatherings, I will ask the city council to table and postpone any of the items in the agenda which public comment is required either under state or local law. I recognize that some people may have wanted to attend tonight's meeting for comment. These items will be unfair to pass anything where the public comment is curtailed. Other items, like the issuance of entertainment license or inconsistent with the executive orders, will also be asked to be tabled. The governor has issued a further decorative directive regarding the Open Meeting Act, which are being reviewed by our legal department and will guide any further meetings at the city council. Until then, I urge the city of East Providence citizens to take warning and directive from our federal, state, and local leaders serious so that we can stop the spread of the virus and protect our citizens. We remain committed to conducting all government business in a transparent manner and we will adjust our procedures accordingly in light of the continuing threat of the public help. Thank you. With that being said, Madam Clerk, can we start off with a roll call vote?
Yes, Council President. Councilman Cahoon?
Here.
Councilman Murato?
Here.
Council Vice President Rodericks?
Here.
Councilwoman Souza?
Here.
Council President Brito?
Aye, here. Next item?
Mr. President, just quickly, may I move to seal the minutes from executive session?
Yes, we have a motion on the floor to seal the executive meeting minutes from the executive session, seconded by Councilwoman Souza. Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Cahoon?
Aye.
Councilman Murato?
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodericks?
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza?
Aye.
Council President Brito?
Aye. So the first item here is pursuant to Ruland General Law 42-46, that's 6B. The chair will accept the motion to add the following items to the town, to the city council's agenda for a regular meeting on March 17, 2020. Ratification of the executive order of the Mayor, Roberto L. De Silva, 2020-004 and 005, declaring a municipal emergency under the authority of the Home Rule Charter of the city of East Providence, Article 3, Section 3-5-9, Ruland General Assembly Law 30-15-12B. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Mr. President, move to amend the agenda to include those items for discussion tonight and to vote tonight.
Second. Roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Cahoon?
Aye.
Councilman Murato?
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodericks?
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza?
Aye.
Council President Brito?
Aye, thank you. Next motion pursuant to Ruland General Assembly Law 42-46-6B. The chair will further accept the motion to vote on the above referenced added agenda items because they exist in an unexpected occurrence that requires immediate action to protect the public. For the record, the unacceptable occurrence is the declaration of a statewide emergency by the Honorable Governor Gina Raimondo to deal with the COVID-19 coronavirus pandemic upon which the local executive orders are based. Would anyone like to make a motion for the agenda?
Mr. President, so moved.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Cahoon?
Aye.
Councilman Murato?
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodericks?
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza?
Aye.
Council President Brito?
Aye, thank you. And finally, the chair will now accept the motion to ratify and extend the previous issued declaration of emergency to remain at full force in effect until April 17, 2020, unless further extended by a vote of the city council. Would anyone like to make a motion on this vote?
So I have a couple of questions on the declaration as it was presented to the council.
Mr. City Solicitor?
So for interpretation and better understandings, item six under, now bear for it, city officials are directed to cancel all nonessential official city meetings limited to travel of the city employees and postpone all public events during this time of the state of municipal emergency. Does that include city council and council meetings?
No, the city council, the mayor is unauthorized to cancel city council meetings. You're a separate branch of government. We're not at that level yet. So no, that's why we're here tonight and that's why we're giving, we're asking for extension of the state of emergency only, but he has not yet. He'd have to do that with the consent of the council president.
Okay, so it's just for clarifications because it does list city officials?
Correct.
And us also standing in that capacity?
It's more, it was more directed to other boards, not elected boards.
Okay. And then the second was number 13, where the mayor's looking to extend the executive order through April 17th. So that would be essentially about a five-week closure of these articles, these amendments that were presented. Any particular reason as to why that date was chosen in comparison to what the governor set forth as a state?
So just let me step back and give you a little bit of explanation. So under state law, a local official can declare a state of emergency only by the principal executive officer of a political subdivision, which would be East Providence. It shall be continued or renewed for a period in excess of seven days except by or with the consent of the governing board of the political subdivision. So, I'm sorry, it shall not be continued. So in other words, you can't continue it more than seven days. If he didn't, if we didn't have this meeting tonight, his order would only last for seven days.
I understand that.
So we chose the April 17th date. Every day, the mayor and the governor are on a conference call at 2:00. They're looking two weeks out, two weeks out, two weeks out. Right now, the last meeting that they had, they indicated that they'd like to extend this as much as possible. That date could be changed by you, obviously, but it was just a date kind of randomly chosen between now and the end of April. But it gives us enough flexibility during that time for not to have to call you back every seven days if there's an amendment or anything like that.
No, I understand that unless it's the council's desire of not having council meetings moving forward. I see that every two weeks we have the opportunity to make these extensions also, correct?
You do.
Okay.
Assuming that you're able to meet?
Right.
And that it don't get worse.
Right. And that would be the decision collectively amongst the council or just between the mayor and the council?
That would be up to the council president.
Okay.
May I ask one follow-up to that? Presumably, nothing prevents the mayor from canceling these earlier than the date that they're, right? So if we set a date, we say, yes, you can extend it through the 17th of April, right? And then the mayor decides, I want to retract my executive order or terminate my executive order, he can do that.
Correct. And equally importantly, with 48 hours notice, you also could, the council could also not renew it. If you decided, we gave you to the 17th, but now we, circumstances have changed, we want to meet and end it today, you can also call a meeting and end it today as well.
Copy.
So both the council and the mayor have the authority to shorten this.
Okay, that's good clarification, thank you.
That's a good question, thank you.
Any other further questions on the declaration?
And again, I just want to be clear. It is the declaration of emergency ratified by the city council that allows the mayor to issue the orders that he has regarding closing of the senior center and without those orders, he really couldn't do that because he has the same power as the governor as far as local matters. And it's all referred to a state statute. So it was necessary to have that declaration of emergency to limit access to town hall, to city hall, to do the things that he's done. And all these flowed, not just by the mayor, this was all requested by the governor's office that each city and town declare a state of emergency. And I think as a last count, most cities and towns have. I think East Providence was one of the first, we did it on a Sunday.
Thank you, Mr. Solicitor. Any other questions we got in the declaration?
I have none.
Okay.
Mr. President, there are no other questions. I would move approval of the extended executive order with the deadlines as outlined here.
Very good. Madam Clerk, roll call vote?
I'll second.
Yeah, okay. I'm sorry.
Councilman Cahoon, seconded.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Cahoon?
Aye.
Councilman Murato?
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodericks?
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza?
Aye.
Council President Brito?
Aye, thank you. Next item, please.
I believe the next item is a consent calendar.
Motion to approve.
I second.
Roll call vote?
Councilman Cahoon?
Aye.
Councilman Murato?
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodericks?
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza?
Aye.
Council President Brito?
Aye. Next item leads us to license approval not requiring public hearings?
Yes, that's the application for a vitaling license, Class 2, pontoon and takeout. And Mrs. Souza, are you here?
You don't have to step up. You can stay right there. Yep.
Mr. President, move to approve.
Second.
We have any questions from the council at this time?
No questions.
No questions. With that being said, we have a motion to approve by Councilman Cahoon, seconded by Councilwoman Souza. Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Cahoon?
Aye.
Councilman Murato?
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodericks?
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza?
Aye.
And Council President Brito?
Aye, thank you. Next item?
Next item is application for holiday sales license, and that's pontoon and takeout. Mrs. Souza, 234 Warren Avenue, number 5, East Providence.
And you have all the information and everything's fine?
Yes.
Have you checked out, right?
Yes, all papers.
At the pleasure of the council. Council, have any questions, concerns?
No.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion for approval by Councilman Roderick, seconded by Councilwoman Souza. Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Cahoon?
Aye.
Councilman Murato?
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodericks?
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza?
Aye.
Council President Brito?
Aye. And that looks like it concludes license approval not requiring public hearing?
Mr. President, we're going to, consistent with the executive order, we're going to table licenses listed on the agenda, C, D, and E, to a time determined by the clerk for the next agenda.
Move to table those items. Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Cahoon?
Aye.
Councilman Murato?
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodericks?
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza?
Aye.
Council President Brito?
Aye. Next item takes us to the city council to convene as board of licenses with disposition only, that is?
Yes, Mr. President.
So there is no hearing at this point in time?
Mr. President, under 81A, disposition of liquor plus, liquor plus received a violation notice. They admitted to the violation and paid a $250 fine and agree that the violation will be recorded on their license for one year. With that disposition, I would ask that the council, as sitting as a board of licenses, accept that disposition.
Move to accept that disposition.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Cahoon?
Aye.
Councilman Murato?
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodericks?
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza?
Aye.
Council President Brito?
Aye.
Mr. President, because of the restrictions on public comment and hearings, I requested that items 8B for refrigerated liquors and townwide and spirits be postponed to a date to be determined by the city clerk.
Move to table those hearings until such date.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Cahoon?
Aye.
Councilman Murato?
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodericks?
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza?
Aye.
Council President Brito?
Aye. We're going to bypass communication and at the council's pleasure, we'll table that for the next meeting as well, provided that the person would like to be at the next meeting. Again, there is no public comment. Next item, please. Resolutions?
Yes, resolutions.
So we'll move right along to resolutions 1, 2, 3, and 4.
Mr. President, we're going to table items 9, mayor all appointments requiring council approval, not requiring council approval. That's just for information purposes only. We're going to table mayor appointment requiring council approval and item number 10.
In addition to that, we'll table mayor's communication and council communication as well.
Okay.
Well, at least on my perspective, I would.
Mr. President, move to table items 9, 10, 11, and 12.
Thank you, Councilman.
Second.
We have a second. 9, 10, 11, 12, move to table, requested by Councilman Cahoon, seconded by Councilwoman Souza. Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Cahoon?
Aye.
Councilman Murato?
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodericks?
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza?
Aye.
Council President Brito?
Aye. Move right along to resolutions. Do we have the claims?
I'm sorry, yes, Mr. President, under a report of new claims that the council met an executive session and approved, took the action on the following claims, approved the claims of Ms. Elizabeth Aruza in the amount of $375, denied the claim of Paula Butterworth in the amount of $450, and approved the sewer charge abatement of $319.30 of Patricia Malozzi. The council took no action on the collective bargaining agreement with the police union or the Gianova litigation. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Solicitor. Moving right along, city clerk, Madam Clerk, to resolutions.
Yes, the first, the first resolution is resolution authorizing the granting of an easement to install an electrical distribution system for the new East Providence High School as well as the grant of easement sponsored by Council Vice President Rodericks.
Mr. President, this goes along with our past procedures of voting to keep the new high school project on track time-wise and schedule-wise, and I think it was important tonight that we at least get this cleared up. Every delay in approval like this could cause a two or three week delay in construction. And thanks to the building committee and Councilman Cahoon keeping a keen eye on that, so far they're on target. And with everything else going on these days, I certainly don't want to see us drag our feet on that project. So simply, without reading the whole thing, it's a resolution that allows, now again, to the electric company to have an easement across the property. Without that, the electrical cabling and other engineering that needs to be done underground could not be done. And it gives them this easement so that in the future, should they have to get in there and repair something or add something, that they'll already have the easement authority to do so. So it's pretty straightforward and it's a helpful resolution to the schedule of the new high school project, barring any problems or questions from anybody in the council. And if Councilman Cahoon wants to add to that, you and I've talked about it, I would move its approval.
Okay, so we have a motion for approval on resolution 1, authorizing a greater easement to install electrical distribution system for the new East Providence High School. Would anyone like to second that motion?
Second.
We have a second by Councilwoman Souza. Roll call vote, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Councilman Cahoon?
Aye.
Councilman Murato?
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodericks?
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza?
Aye.
Council President Brito?
Aye, thank you. Moving right along to item number 2 on the resolutions.
Yes, resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract amendment for continued assistance with professional services for the strategic assessment of the wastewater operating contract and wholesale services project sponsored by Council Vice President Rodericks.
Mr. President, I'm sorry. Go ahead. No, please. I can give you an update to the council. As you know, the council previously approved a contract for Arcadia to review our wastewater system. They gave a report to the council a couple of months ago, I think now, with options. Since that time, there have been ongoing negotiations with the current provider of sewer treatment services, and they've given us a new contract to review with different proposals. This amendment allows Arcadia to actually review that contract for us and give recommendations as to what may or may not be beneficial in the new proposal that the current operator of the plant is giving us. So it's basically an extension of the consulting contract. And because it went over the $50,000 amount initially, we decided that we'd come back before the council to get the extra authority to do so.
I have a quick question on that. Can that money come out of that $500,000 that we just received from the wastewater?
Well, that money got put back into the enterprise fund. So, you know, this will be paid by the, I think this is being paid by the enterprise fund or outside of the budget. So I can't tell you where the money's coming from.
I'm saying, can it come out of that 500? That's the question.
I, I'm really not sure. I'd have to defer to Malcolm on that one.
Is there any way we can find out? Is this a pressing issue to pass this?
It is a pressing because our contract expires on April 1st and we're trying to extend it through October 1st, but we want to have a report of.
Is there any way we can amend that tonight?
To what?
That it comes out of that fund, that money that we received?
I guess you could make an amendment that the money, if possible, the money come out of that fund, yes. If not, we have to get it from the general.
Okay, so I would like to make an amendment that the money comes out of that fund that we received, whichever the name of that fund is.
If possible.
If possible.
And if not, can come out of the general, wherever it is. Okay, that's fine.
Should I amend my motion to, I would amend my motion to approve this with the stipulation that the councilman has suggested that the money come from the $500,000 refund that is in the enterprise fund, if possible.
If possible. And if not, it will come out of the general, wherever the general fund is.
Right, that'll be the first priority, if possible. If not, it has to come out of the already appropriated general fund amount.
And if it can't come out of that fund, we'll give you a letter why it could not and tell you where.
I appreciate that.
Thank you, that was my follow-up remark, is wherever it's coming from, can we be advised?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think, and I agree with the amendment, and it's again important, I think, for timing because of our concerns with the wastewater contract. So let's pay for it if we can out of that and without stopping the process. So it's a good amendment.
So currently, we have a motion on the floor by Councilman Roderick to amend the existing motion for resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract amendment for continued assistance in professional service of the strategic assessment of the wastewater operation. And that amendment is to have the money, if possible, come out of the enterprise fund, which we received in excess of $500,000, if I'm not mistaken. So a motion is on the floor at this point in time to amend the existing resolution. Would anyone like to second that motion?
Second.
We have a second motion by Councilwoman Souza. Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Councilman Cahoon?
Aye.
Councilman Murato?
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodericks?
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza?
Aye.
Council President Brito?
Aye. Moving right along to resolution number 3.
The next resolution is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract addendum for continued engineering and wetland consulting services related to the Runens River tributary restoration project sponsored by, let the record state that it should be corrected to Councilwoman Souza.
So this resolution is brought forward for the council to, because of the change in fee, as you may be aware, GZA Eco-Environmental has been working with the city on the Runes River project and mitigation down there for the last four years. And in an effort to continue that process in cleaning out and doing the work that it needs to be done down there, it requires additional funding based on their scope of practice. So if there are no further questions or comments, I move for approval.
So we have a motion, a motion on the floor for approval for resolution number 4, excuse me, resolution number 3, authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract addendum for the continued engineering and wetland consulting services related to the Runz River. Would anyone like to second that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Councilman Kahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodericks.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
Council President Brito.
Aye, thank you. Next resolution, I'm going to ask at this point in time that we table the resolution authorizing the granting of an easement to construct a temporary pool. So to continue on, I'm going to ask at this point in time to table the next resolution, number 4, authorizing the granting of an easement to construct a temporary pool and water system at Hunts Mills for the fish ladder.
I make a motion to table that.
In lieu of moving the meeting right along and getting us all out of here.
I'll second, Councilwoman Souza's motion.
Okay, roll call vote.
Councilman Kahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Roderick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
Council President Brito.
Aye. The next item brings us to reconvene in executive session, which we do not have at this point in time. So that brings.